I'll call the meeting to order. The regular meeting of Mount Holly Planning Commission for Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. Firstly, are there any changes to the agenda? I don't have anything. All right, hearing none, agenda is approved. Faith, I believe, sent around one set of minutes from our last regular meeting through email. Everybody have a chance to read those?
Yes.
Any corrections, omissions, additions? Nothing? Hearing nothing. We'll consider those minutes approved, moving right into reports. I don't have anything that's not already on the agenda, and Faith is not here today. And I don't have anything from her specifically, so we'll move right through that. Making good time. Right to subdivision proposals. So we have two. Oh, what's that? Do you care if I turn this over?
I was actually.
Sorry, I think they're.
Yeah. Wanted to get that.
Yeah, we'll do that. I think this will be a little easier. Christopher, are you representing the Turcos today?
Yes, they should be there as well. Are they there?
They do not appear to be here. There is a bit of a snowfall happening, so they may have gotten postponed.
I sure hope they show up because they've got the map.
I do have a map.
Oh, the new one.
One eighteenth. Is that new?
That's right. Well, when was the last meeting, though?
Sounds old.
Last meeting.
Yeah, here he comes. I recognize the hat.
Oh, good, because he's got the map. You remember, we, you told us. At the last meeting, you told us what we were going to have to include on the final plat. So we gave the surveyor his instructions, and I haven't seen it yet because I'm out of town, but Vince has it, and I presume it's going to be correct, or at least I sure hope it is.
It appears to be new. It has new items on it. So I think it is updated. It has the new location here, that's the river. Yeah, you have the minutes with the list of things we want to, just go through that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm looking. I can try to see what session. Might be easier.
Okay, yeah. So we were just starting to look at your, what I believe is your newest map.
Yeah.
Is this the newest one?
Yeah.
Okay. It does appear to have things we asked for, so Chris, I believe we do have the latest map. And I think we do. I think the only thing left we had for the last meeting was to go through the things we asked for on the map.
And make sure they're.
And make sure they're there, and then. And I think that was, then we'll just go forward. Okay, so I'll walk through what we asked for last time. It looks like it's there, but.
Yeah, it's there in the paragraph.
Need to check them as I say.
Yeah.
All right. Insert the sizes of each lot alongside the total size of the subdivision. Little size? Like in the box?
Get a note from.
I don't see a top four.
Right there.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus, choice. Definitely going to be plus or minus because these weren't surveyed. All right, next. Insert lot identifiers based on wastewater permit. A and B, they're there. Insert owner's address and surveyor's address and title block.
Surveyor, so.
There it is. All existing buildings and structures.
We wanted that one added, right?
Yep, that's good.
Yeah, that's was on the watchroom.
Stream running through the property. Where it crosses the road.
No, it goes off.
Up here, I think that's what we meant. So, okay, good. That's it?
For which lot anyway, and I think they wanted the contour.
And the locus, yeah, so. Looks good. Great. Any commissioners have any other thoughts on this before we? Move forward? Want to look at all the survey?
All looks like it's there.
Yeah.
Yes, we have everything that's on our, on the subdivision.
Andy, you're not able to see this, so I don't know what we're going to do about that. But I don't know where they.
Consider flat on the table.
Flat on the table?
Yeah. Pushing a little towards the TV, big TV screen.
Like that?
Let's see.
If there's anything Andy, you want us to look at, we can do that for you.
Push it a little more into that blank space on the other table in front of you.
Yeah, rotate it 90 degrees, got it clockwise.
And then bring it towards you a little bit, a little, no, towards John.
Or John.
John.
There you go.
There you go. Pick somebody.
I can see much of it, but I don't know that I can add anything to what the three of you have just done.
There's no way. There's no way.
Yeah, Chris can see as well as I can.
Andy, I could take a picture and email it to you.
The three of you just looked at it.
That's where it's from.
Chris, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, technology does have its limitations.
Yeah, well. Do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, it looks complete to me. The application looks complete. Does anybody want to look that over again? I think we looked at that last night.
I'll look.
Yeah, look. Andy, can you remind me what else you have in front of you, what else is on our checklist? I think at this point, our next step is to. Schedule a hearing. Is that your understanding?
I believe so, but let me just.
Looking at the checklist here.
Well, Ruston spent a couple of years. He went through, I think, the checklist.
We don't even do that.
I think he did, yes.
Yeah.
Water supply, utility access. Location and size of existing culvert strains. Location names and what's existing.
It does drive way.
Are you available? What is the date?
We're doing a special meeting date. The second or the first month.
We can't get there.
We can't.
Thirty days. So we're at this point in the process, going to schedule a public hearing.
Right.
And that's a necessary condition of approval. And that you will basically present your final plan with a Mylar version of it.
Do you need that?
The, we, we're plastic. It doesn't technically have to be before, but it often is. And after that meeting, we will write a decision either to approve or to deny the subdivision.
I'm sorry. The final, what do you mean, the final plan? Is that what you have in front of you now?
It is. It is considered a final plat. Because we haven't made any additional changes or ask ready. But for it to be recorded, it has to be in Mylar. And often that presented. We could sign.
Does it have the block? Yeah, with a clerk and the planning commission would indicate.
It does. Oh, no, it doesn't. It has the other one. Oh, that's an excellent point. Yeah, it doesn't have it, so that's one additional change we'll need. But I still think we can go forward with the hearings, scheduling hearing. So. This block here is for recording the final. Version in the town records. But we'll also need another one that. Allows us to sign and approve the subdivision itself. So there's, we can show you an example. Carol can probably pull one out, show you the example. It's, it's easy to add, and it won't hold up your hearing. We could certainly write it in if we really needed to, but since another version is going to be prepared anyway, for the Mylar, it's easy enough to add that in. Shouldn't cost anyone money. So we're looking at.
Yeah, it does.
Does it? Well, that's a seventeen. Are you available on the seventeenth of April?
Yeah.
What time? Six thirty for the normal meeting?
Well, I'd say, I'd say a half hour is sufficient for this. What do you guys think? Should we be able to do it a half hour easy?
I think so.
No, the. Probably gonna have two more.
Well, I don't know that yet.
Yeah, I mean, we have time or done. Well, I don't know, I guess.
I'd just go ahead and say it.
Six thirty?
Yeah. Andy, does that work for you, six thirty Eastern time on the seventeenth?
Yes, it does. It does.
Does that work for you? Okay. So we have a motion?
Make some motion for the meeting on the seventeenth.
I'll second the motion for April seventeenth at six thirty PM for the Turco subdivision.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
All right. Andy? Are you in favor?
Yes, I am. Sorry. Could you just repeat the time again?
Six thirty.
Six thirty PM.
Very good.
Good.
And that was unanimous. I mean, there's no post. All right, so you're set for a subdivision hearing in a month. And we will, I think Carol can help you out, maybe she has a second, otherwise I can help you out there with what the signature block would look like for the planning commission.
Right.
No, you're all set, so.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much, everybody. I'm going to sign off.
All right, thank you, Christopher.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Number two, Robert Carroll subdivision.
It is in the process of being submitted to the state. Bring down what is being submitted to the state for that permit, to get that language that we need. The deferral permit that you had referred to has not been issued for, since 2007. So when they do the, the language, when they do the overview of the thing, they just include the language in the deed to authorize the no requirement for septic in the ground due to the subdivisions, due to the signs. This is from, this is from the state. I got in touch with Angela something at the Relling A and R. My surveyor had gotten in touch with the same department, and this is the, this is the procedure that's necessary. He's supposed to be submitting this to them for their approval. By the end of the week.
End of the week, okay. Who is your surveyor?
TCE out of Willa, I think it's Essex, way up north.
Way up. Yep, okay. So when you say submitted to the state.
They're submitting it for the subdivision.
Where every slot permit is needed.
Right, because they don't issue the referral permits.
Okay.
They haven't done it for like seventeen, eighteen years. And so to do this deferral, I have to submit this to them. They look at it, and as long as it conforms to their requirement rules, then they will issue the okay, they will authorize this, and then the only reason has to be language in the deed that the successive owner will be responsible for all of these tests, all the, it's too large of a parcel to be able to try to know where the septic system is going to go. Right? Then for me to go out and have to spend money to try to find every available site on that parcel of land is just, it's, it's beyond, it's ridiculous. So they accept, they simply say, okay, this is compliant with everything, and they'll, they'll issue that verbiage in the deed or in that, it's included in the deed so that whoever's buying that. I can get an affirmation to my engineer that it is suitable for septic systems, right? But they just have to look at where it's going to go and what needs to happen to make it happen in that particular location.
Noting here, and I don't know whether this is accurate or reflects the plan that we'll eventually see. But you have four lots here now, or last time. There's only three. So one. Good start to note the numbering at two, so one is left off. Right, this is the one that we're assuming. Yeah, so the numbering is starting at parcel two, so was there a parcel one?
Parcel one, I'm assuming, is what they assumed as the original parcel.
Oh, okay.
But I submitted the same drawing that I brought you at the last, at the last meeting where I had it.
Which is interesting, true.
And they changed it to two, three, and four.
Yep.
One being, I'm assuming, the original.
And when you say you submitted a waste.
This hasn't been, it hasn't been submitted yet.
By the end of the week.
By the end of the week. He's supposed to be submitting this. This is the final plan that's going to be going to the state.
Yeah.
For approval.
Right.
Because he's came down, he's confirmed all the boundaries, he's confirmed all the points, he's set the boundaries on the new boundary lines that I wanted, he set down, got them in appropriate locations.
Yep.
So they're going to do this now, it's submitted to the state, and then it has to go through the state review process, and they'll either say yes, a yes or no.
Okay.
So I'm a little confused as to, you know, how this all ties into Mount Holly's because when I took an interpretive language from the application that I got from you guys, this is nothing like that process.
It isn't because the process that you got the application for was written in nineteen ninety-eight.
I got it two weeks before I started the process.
Yes, but the, the application.
I, I don't know where it came from. I got it from the town office.
What I'm telling you is the application, the checklist that you got was written in nineteen ninety-eight.
Is that under docket to be updated?
Yes, it is one of the things I really liked that.
Okay. Because I had no idea, number one, that they had to go through the state.
Yeah, it's super confusing.
Okay, I mean, that would have been, that would have been helpful in the initial application.
Very much agree.
But I knew that if that had to happen, I could have, you know, passed my, my, you know, engineering firm with that right up front.
Very much agree. Yeah, we, the local regulations were written. Gosh, what is it?
Back in nineteen.
Almost twenty years, fifteen years before the state rules. So the state gets to change the rules anytime they want to. And they took powers away from the local municipalities, so the town used to essentially permit septic systems.
The town used to be in charge of it, and the state took it away after those regulations were written.
Well, yeah, when it changed, after the oversight, they didn't want to be ten point one acre exemption to everything that had to be.
Right.
You know, in compliance.
Right, so our regulations are very confusing because they have test pits and all that stuff.
Well, I think it would be advantageous if you would update that cover sheet with the instructions to be able to make that available to the next person in my position.
I'll tell you what, we will make a note of that in the minutes, specific request, because I. We've heard it, we've heard it before, it's on our list, so we take it seriously, so. We will have to wait till we see that from the state.
I understand.
You understand that? Okay, good.
I simply wanted to stay, keep you guys in the loop, because the way we're at right now.
Appreciate it.
I went to the state, you know, I, when I left this meeting last time, I spent the day on the computer, and I researched, and I contacted people, and I got, people get back and explain the whole thing to me. And I was enlightened and disappointed at the same time.
Right, well, I'm glad you got through.
But, you know, it's on, it's in the state now, it's in the process now, but it belongs.
Okay.
So.
I think one of the things that has been brought to our attention, and by the the Norton's particularly, is that there may be some question about where the access to, I don't know, we're calling it parcel four now, where the access to parcel four will, will be, originate from.
There's all that road furniture, New York can decide wherever they want to put it.
Okay. Do you have any specific questions?
Yeah, as long as it's not near our springs, and we have water rights from there, that spring that goes out and goes to the burn. It's always been in there, it's in the deed.
Right, so is that an issue, do you think?
Yeah.
No. No. They put it. It's been brought to my attention that we, we need to alter some lines, you feel they're not where they belong. My surveyor brought that, my, you know, when he was measuring things out.
She measured it, I was there helping measure it. We had a fifty foot tee measured, we walked in.
Which, which lines are we talking about here?
The lines on that map I just gave you are the points as.
Yeah, well, what do you, which line?
As per registered survey. On that, you have in your hand, the whole map, it's all great here.
So there is a.
The noise.
I'm partially aware of two surveys that might be relevant here. In addition to this one, this is the first time I've seen this one. So what I'm hearing is, let me just make sure I understand.
Okay.
Okay. What I'm hearing you say is TCI, or your surveyor, was it, sorry, I forget the name, is suggesting that either a recorded survey in land records or monuments on the ground are incorrect?
The only recorded survey is, is the one acre lot that they surveyed. My front had never been surveyed before.
Correct, but.
So that lot, that lot was shared, and I brought this to the, the planning commission's attention twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago.
Okay.
That when you have a survey registered in the town with an adjacent landowner that doesn't have a survey, well, before a survey gets registered with the town or, or or recorded, that they really should have some real, or approval process or agreement process, especially since it doesn't match anything in the deed that can lead to those points. There is no surveyor out there that is going to be able to duplicate those points
Well.
from the reg, from the paperwork that that was created from.
So, you know, we're in a meeting here, so one thing that. Are we all in agreement that the monuments on the ground have been there for, you say, twenty years?
Whenever they were, when you guys bought the property, or you took possession of the property back in the nineties.
These monuments have been in place for over twenty years.
That was Ralph Michaels, yeah.
Yes.
So, you know, we're not in a position where you can give legal opinions of any kind.
Right.
Well, you know, there is a sort of presumption if a monument has been there for twenty years.
Well, the only thing.
That is, just, let me say this, there is a sort of presumption that if a monument has been there for over twenty years uncontested, and there is not, has not been good faith effort to produce a survey showing the accuracy of those positions. I don't think many surveyors, and you may have found one, but I don't think many surveyors would attempt to change that.
No, and it says plus or minus two on the deed, everyone's.
And, and just to be clear, if there is dispute on this, it is probably something for the courts and not the planning commission.
I agree, I agree.
So we definitely do not want.
All these, all these, all these are, these points here are referenced on that map.
Yeah.
Are the points that they registered, recorded with the town. Those are the physical locations that they recorded with the town that are referenced on that. I don't know about monuments in the ground because I never looked at them.
Okay.
That was pre me, that was my mom and dad at that point in time.
Yep.
But I do know that the deed, when they were doing that, that the prior deed to that property had no physical boundary descriptions. It was purely described as a, a parcel of land, it had no tree line, no fence line, no stone walls, no trees, no.
That's back years, handshake, those guys. Well, they're not here.
Common.
That's right. Yeah, yeah.
Well.
That's not what we're here for.
There's nothing in the deed that shows or reflects that.
Well, we're not here.
I just want to be clear.
They typically went from point A to point B.
Right, I was there.
Point C.
Yeah.
Um, just so in the, in the context of this being a subdivision application, I want to be clear on whether or not there is any dispute over the boundaries. Because I think it's my opinion, I think we probably have to get some legal, legal opinion on this.
I have made references in the past that they need to pull back onto their property.
Well, let me just finish saying, I was.
Hold our pitch.
One second. So I think.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Just one second. I think in the context of a subdivision proceeding, it's very difficult for the town to move forward if there is dispute as to the boundaries. And that seems like something we'd be just asking for trouble. And we might need to seek, you know, legal opinion from the town attorney on that. Because we.
We want to make a subdivision that has disputed property lines and keep caving the can down their own.
Yeah, we, you know, we, from our, the information at our disposal, I mean, if you're saying that there's a recorded survey that's inaccurate, that's.
The only, the only recorded survey was the one that they recorded.
Right.
But they did, they never went through a legal process to get the deed altered to reflect the new boundary lines. In respect to the, you wouldn't be able to find, and no surveyor could manning go back in the history and duplicate those points.
Okay, just to be.
The only way he was able to do it was he would, he's, he's, he recorded, or he measured what they reported.
Okay, just so we're just, just so we're dealing in facts, I understand. So there's two surveys, just one second, so there's two surveys that I know of, or I've heard of. The one by Michael, Ralph Michael. And potentially by Deb Daniels.
Yeah.
Do you have a paper copy that Deb's never reported?
There's Deb, that's why we got this.
Has never been reported.
Deb Daniels recorded it. But this is.
This one wasn't reported, but you have, this is the only copy that you, you have an original copy of this?
There was a copy that Miles Richards grabbed, Miles from way, way back, I don't really remember him. But any time anyone would come into the map, he would grab it, sort of it into town records. But it was never, it was recorded.
Okay.
It was brought to my attention that.
It's not recorded, but this is also showing Kenneth Hawkins where a line is, and it's got this, and it does have, it's got Deb Daniels who did this.
So Deb is still around. Have you spoken with her?
No, I've seen her since I helped her measure the property. I held the tape.
I talked to her in the last few weeks.
Yep.
How about this?
This is what I was finding when I, when I came to the planning commission twenty-five years ago.
I wasn't.
This was the scenario that I was trying to eliminate.
Yeah, no.
Because if somebody comes in with a survey that has an obucher that does not have a survey on their property, that there needs to be a document affirming an agreement of them boundaries.
I'm not.
And I brought that.
I'm versed in what the, you know, the rules of.
I brought that to this, this committee way back a long time ago.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, you are disputing the Deb Daniels survey, but not the Ralph Michael survey, or, or both?
Neither of them were ever, Deb Daniels survey was, was done, it was performed, but it was never recorded. It was, my mom paid to have it done.
Yep.
Because basically she was giving my brother a piece of land.
Right.
That piece got recorded, the balance of the land never got recorded.
So. You mean, you mean the deed got recorded, but not.
The deed got recorded on that, the survey never got.
But the Ralph Michael survey was recorded.
And that's where the problem was, because the appropriate paperwork with the deed were on it, never, never transpired to that. There was never any signatures from the existing owners, my parents. In agreement with that parcel of land, I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing the points that were set in the ground. The original deed called for one square acre, that was all that was on the deed. No, the deed that they recorded, or they measured, they came up with one point one two. But the deed recorded verbally, the only verbal description of that piece of property. Was it denoted as one square acre.
No, there was two lots there, let's get the story straight, but the deed stated two lots. Do you want me to go dig the deed out?
Okay.
There was a barn lot? Yes.
Right, and there's, but there's no.
Okay, we're, we're gonna talk to the chair, we're not gonna talk to each other, okay, we're gonna talk to the chair.
Um, the barn lot was resolved when I was given a quick claim deed to that piece of property. So, we're, it was, again, it was another.
I'm just gonna make sure I go step by step, so I understand, because I know a lot of history here. On the, on the point of, and you know, these, the rest of the guys can get, jump in too. Um, on the point of whether it's one acre or one point one two, that's insignificant.
Exactly.
We understand that, right?
Exactly.
The old, in deeds, they would often say hand wave V, no verse, right?
I don't have a problem with the one point one two.
Okay.
All I'm saying is there, this is the point, the map that I presented.
Mm-hmm.
Is the measured location of those monuments, I had no reason to change them.
Okay.
There is nothing in my reflection that they would ever have been changed.
Cause I.
We're in a different location, all I'm saying is, that's what the, that's what.
Your surveyor.
My surveyor measured according to their.
So measured actual locations of.
And that's where the monuments are supposed to be.
Okay, well, those are two different things. So, what I first heard you say earlier is that the monuments were in the wrong locations.
According to what my surveyor just recorded, or what he measured.
So your surveyor, okay. So did your surveyor come to the site?
Yes.
Okay, and he disagreed with the location of those pins?
Yes.
That's not uncommon.
That's not, but that's.
Uh, when there is no meets and bounds survey, a descriptive survey. They were able to find sufficient evidence to sit, suggest that.
Supposedly pins were all set. Supposedly pins were all set on, on the four corners of that one acre person, that one point one two.
By?
Michaels. I'm not contesting Ralph Michael's location.
Okay, so what's the problem?
I'm so confused. Or are we talking about that in the wrong place?
The, the location of the pins are not added with fluid, that's the problem.
Plus or minus on the deed, that's not why we're here, we're here for a road to go down by our spring.
That's the only reason we're here for, we don't care about anything else.
Well, if he disagrees with where your law, even that, that's an issue for us.
It's plus or minus. Yep, and every deed says it, I don't care, every deed. So.
Before the survey.
This is what's gonna tie things up, so be it, so.
It's been there forever, so, I've been married about thirty-two years, thirty-three years, it's been there since I was married, so.
No, so, and I hope Deb Daniels hold the tape measure to measure it.
And then Evelyn's right with her, so.
No, our concern is about putting, we heard maybe the driveway's going by the spring.
I'm contesting the one point one two acres.
Okay.
Oh, is there anything contested?
What now, so yeah, let's roll.
Is there anything contested?
The only thing to test, I know this, that's, that's, I know that his log pile, I know your log pile is sitting on that back corner pin. Because you could, you could hardly get a truck in there with a log pile before, and now you have three trucks and a log pile.
No.
I mean, three trucks.
Okay, but, but.
Are we contesting where the pins are? Are we contesting where the pins are?
I wanna just go, any surveyor can come and take them documents from the town, the recorded survey. And they can go and they can find them on the ground.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Are we contesting where the pins are right now?
I haven't physically seen them, the surveyor told me that there was some, some, you know. Some conflict issues.
Yeah, with you, back in the day, said you're gonna pull our pins, that's what we told him right from the beginning.
Yeah.
We never, I never contested anything.
You said years ago that we weren't supposed to have that much land and you were pulling the pins in, and I told you, do you?
I didn't even, I didn't even own the land.
I, yeah, I know that, but you're the one that, when your mom hit it, you said, well, I'm gonna come pull the pins, and I said, you never touched a pin.
I never.
So.
Okay, Andy's.
Andy, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, but. There's a lot of back and forth here, and I remain rather unclear, but I, I understand there's an issue concerning about the location of an access road. But apart from that, apart from that, I remain um quite confused as to what. The nature of the disagreement is, or even if there is one, a disagreement with respect to property lines. And it seems to me that as part of this subdivision application. Um, the applicant has to submit a survey. Of the property, and whether it's a new survey, an old survey, a survey has to be submitted. And. If there is a dispute among the proper, budding property owners about where those lines are, that's a problem for us as commissioners. Um, and whether we can proceed uh to approve a subdivision. Uh, if there is a dispute between uh the subdivider and the budding property owners. As to the accuracy of that survey, I'm not saying there is a dispute, but it sounds like there is. And I remain unclear as to whether there really is one or not, but if there is one, it's a problem for us. To go ahead and um approve a subdivision if the survey is in dispute. And to me, that's kind of the bottom line on this, uh, if you, if any of those of you who are present. Have a disagreement about the survey that's going to be the basis for an uh subdivision, then we need to get that resolved. At least that's my view of this.
Again.
I agree with.
I'm not disputing the survey as it was serving, because that's often the reported points. That the town has on record. I'm not disputing the one point one two acres.
Okay, let's go back to Andrew Seurat's question, what, what is the contested issue at this point?
Your surveyor said.
The pins are not in the right locations, according to what my surveyor discovered.
Can I ask a?
So if you went, and, and if you went with another surveyor and he were to duplicate those, those, those readings or those recordings. Which I don't know how they do it, but they do it geographically, or with, they're, they're just up in the sky. They're gonna come up with the same, same locations.
Okay, Tiffany?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if the pins have been here for twenty years, and if everybody's saying nobody's touched them, why didn't. Your surveyor hit each pin and see what that area.
Our, my, as I said again, as I said again. Daniels never recorded any part of that survey, she had no part of, other than the initial discussion you guys had. I remember my mom saying that she wanted to add that one, that little bit, because your well, your spring was on our farm.
Right, okay, but that's.
Right, so they wanted to add that little bit to do that, but it was never reflected in a deed.
This is way before my time.
I'm just saying, also. It was never reflected in the deed, but we just said, you know, it's family, so we just, we didn't have nothing to matter. So now the pin locations, and I'm not saying that they moved them, or I moved them, or Mr. Daniels misset them. Where they are reflected in that map, and the area that's encompassed in that is one point one two acres. And it's as per recorded dimensions on the deed. That's all I'm asking, is that we go back.
So, yeah, okay, so, so we're a little bit of a pickle here, I mean, that's, that is, so, you know, we've had an opportunity to.
I'm confused.
Um, say this multiple times, and it does indeed sound like there is a conflict over boundary lines. And locations of in-ground monuments, and that seems a very significant issue for this commission. I would like to make a suggestion that Deb Daniel and your circle.
Any of this.
She absolutely can be.
She's the one that did it the first time.
I would suggest.
From the command here.
That you call that.
Can someone just answer my simple question?
Just one second, I'll, I'll get back to it, I, I suggest that if there is a dispute between surveyors. What I have seen work is the surveyors come out together with the landowners. Walk the boundary, this is a very easy case, it's one acre, it'll take an hour. And you can put this to bed um in an afternoon. Does that sound like something that we might be able to do so we can move forward with this process, or?
I'm just reflecting boundaries that they set.
I understand, I, I think now.
I, I, I'm not contesting the one point one two acres.
Right.
Or the survey, you're just saying the pins are not where the survey says the pins are.
The one that measured them, and I'm not the one.
I did promise Tiffany.
If we have four pins, okay, if your surveyor came in with ding, dang, ding, dum, whatever, what is he saying that is then? Is my question, what's the land that he's saying that's there?
He's, whatever the mon, it's, it's reflected.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Um, I think what I hear, what I'm hearing, and uh. I'll leave it to the applicant and the interested parties to tell me if I'm wrong. But I think what I'm hearing is that the applicant, Mr. Garrow. Uh, has no issue with the survey or the size of the lot if it's claimed to be one point one two acres. But doesn't agree with the pins, but what I hear uh the Norton's saying. Is that they think the pins are the right location, and if, if that's what I'm hearing, then there is a disagreement. As to where the boundaries are, and I think the chair's suggestion that you get your respective uh surveyors out there. Uh, walk it and resolve it amongst yourselves, so we can move forward. Now, did I get, did I get that wrong? Did I get it wrong? I mean, that's what I'm hearing is that.
I, I, I don't know how I can present any different argument, I'm, I'm working off and recording.
I'm, I'm not asking for you to present an argument, I'm asking you to tell me, to answer my question, which is. Did I accurately state where the disagreement is?
Yes, I would say so.
But there's not a disagreement with the reported deed, there's not a disagreement where the reported deed says the pins are. There is a disagreement that where the pins actually are.
Either replaced or are now, either one, doesn't matter to us.
There's a disagreement about that, it's not the paperwork side of it.
I, I would have to agree.
That needs to be resolved before this goes forward, so.
That's my opinion. And John. Can I do any more than what I've already done?
So why didn't your surveyor then say, okay, each pin, this is what, okay, now it's up to one point five acres, let's just say. Say, well, then obviously pins got moved if it's that much more, well, I'm just saying, so. What is the survey actually saying that those four pins and inside that equals?
One point one two acres.
That's the only thing, what is your survey then say?
My survey that I just had done, it just reflects that as being one point one two acres.
You can take both, I, 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 I know all I need to know on this one.
Well, you're saying a pin removed, but what's your, what's your surveyor saying then?
The original one, they have. Math error, got you the one point one two.
Right.
Maybe put it, I'm gonna make up a number, ten to be over.
Right, so that's what I'm thinking, so why, what is inside that area then?
I'm.
You just, let me, my attitude is you just both have, I get the other, and I agree that the pins.
I know, I know that too, but everything, plus or minus.
Not what's the survey. On the other side of the road, there was twenty-five plus or minus, it turned out to be twenty-six, point five acres after we surveyed it. Because now they know, because they've surveyed. And with the data and the technology, they have to, they can tell you right now too.
I did that with Deb Daniels, to help the tape measure, with her.
Yeah, Evelyn was there, we blocked all the lines.
So they're gonna try to keep this to.
Yeah. So, this is what.
Oh, we were concerned about the road.
I have no proposed road going.
Well, let me, let me just be very clear. Well, I'm gonna sum this up.
No, I don't.
If there is, if, as. As long as, my opinion, we'll, we'll pick a topic. But um, my opinion is, as long as there is this significant a dispute over the locations of monuments. Um, we are not gonna move forward with a subdivision until that's rectified.
That's fine.
Well, for you.
Well, that's why I think it's. It's fair to.
How can I do anything different than have it measured and surveyed and locate where the pin locations were supposed to be?
When you have a disagreement with the reported survey, often you will have to talk to your neighbor. And that's pretty common, we do see that on occasions, where surveyors come up with different answers. Firstly, not everybody's perfect.
No, we understand that, and that's.
But also, you can measure the same thing, I mean, if you've got construction in your life, I'm sure. You can measure something a couple times and come up with a different answer, it just happens.
They built the damn house.
To a one point one two acre lot.
But so the way that that gets resolved in the most. Efficient and fair way without the courts, is that you get out there. This is how they used to do it for hundreds of years, you walk in, you figure it out, you get the surveyors to come and give you. Deb will say this, Val won't be able to help us, rest in peace.
Yeah.
But Deb is around, and she can come out, I know it's money, everything's money, unfortunately, but. Um. It's something that the planning commission, I don't think wants to get, talk in the middle of.
Yeah, I don't, no.
Getting a lawsuit is not something that we wanna do.
No.
So, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I understand.
I mean, I know they're far away, but I'm sure they would come down and lock the lines.
At the same time.
Yes.
Care of both parties, you know.
Yeah, so this was to.
It's only an acre, you know, so a three of, of, of a hundred acres is, is expensive.
I know.
Exactly.
This is a, maybe an hour of their work with drive time, and maybe you can negotiate, I've, I've seen it, some of the surveyors, if it's their own work. Will, will uh comp you the drive time, and they'll just do the on-the-ground time. So, you know, an hour of surveyor time is a lot, she, trust me, it's a lot cheaper than lawyers.
I have no contact info for Deb, I like tried to find.
I do, well, you, you wouldn't need it, it's really.
Yep, to us, yeah.
So to like skip out on everything, surveyors, money, blah, 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 what is the next step of? Just agreeing, a letter between the two parties, agreeing that where the monuments are is fine, and come down and notarize it with the town? Or to actually go forth and get Deb, he gets his person, everybody walks, pay some money? Is there, but more or less what I'm saying, is there an easier way to get out of that one fund, about what it is? I understand that, but this, with that one question, though, can the two parties agree?
And it doesn't match, or if the pins have been moved. And it does not match the. Um, surveys. If you come to an agreement about where the pins are, that is technically a boundary line adjustment. Correct? If it's increasing or decreasing the parcel size.
If, if surveyors wanna reset, surveyors reset pins without involvement of the town all the time. If you, if they're, if it doesn't impact the recorded survey or reported deed, and if it more accurately reflects them. On the ground, they're well within their rights to move those things. So, it's really something that you guys can handle.
So that'd be the simple part then, you could do it that way.
The simplest thing, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Is that you, you could involve surveyors or not.
Yeah.
If you two could just agree and go off.
I already had surveyors who discovered this and made me aware of it.
Right.
In the process of trying to do this.
And now we're aware of it, so we have to unfortunately act on it.
Yeah.
You got that all subdivided out?
No, this is the process.
Does he, did he show you on the map where the pins should be?
He recorded them, but I didn't go down with him, like, I haven't had a meeting with him on site since he started.
Okay, well, when I.
He went down and he physically went, and, and I'm assuming he said he talked to you guys, so. So he was, he was locating pins at that point in time, he, he managed to find all the rest of them.
No, he didn't, yeah.
And he said that you understood where they were, but it's like, that's where they're recorded to be.
Right, years ago, that's why I painted them in the ground.
They don't change. They don't change. If they're put in the ground, they don't change.
But that's what I'm saying. Did he show you what the difference was on any of your maps?
So he had to survey it now where the pins are.
That's what's a few of what you're saying.
These surveys to the survey that you guys reported to, not to the pin location of the pins.
So that's what I just don't understand. Why doesn't, if the pins were technically all there, why didn't he physically go? I understand that if they're.
Because if the pins don't, don't match up to.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Why didn't he go by each?
I guess that's.
That's true. I can't change your location.
That's true.
No, that's. I haven't seen any diaphragms yet, so. No, no, no. What I was gonna say, they're looking at.
Probably gonna be a lawyer issue. The only thing about that here, there are nothing else.
I think it's only like one or two pins. That is wrong. This is wrong, I think.
I just don't want to drag me by our pelvis.
That's what we're here for.
We have water rights for them to go to the barn and goes over through and crosses the road.
Well, that's just my concern though. The pins were incorrect. Why didn't he bring that upon his, he's got it by the new.
I think we're, we're gonna need to. Yes, yeah. You got, are we all on the same onus?
Yeah. Tell them what the differences are so they can know.
Well, I think actually, I don't think there's any problem.
I think there's some serious problems here. All right, so Andy, are, are we on the same page here?
There, there are too many people talking at once for the last five minutes for me to really follow what's going on.
That's the planning commission's.
So, so what, I'm sorry, what, what, what is the page?
So, I, so okay, so where I am is I would like to see this resolved by the parties in the most friendly and cost-effective way that doesn't involve the town or expose the town to any uh, legal risk.
Yeah, I agree.
Fair enough.
And at the end of the day, you're pulled back.
So then back to something back up. If the two parties were to agree without getting anybody else involved, and a letter between the two of them, they notarize the town and given saying this party, this party agrees to where the monument pins are?
It's gotta be remeasured.
Sure. I would prefer that, I would prefer Deb and the surveyor to uh, suggest to us how that should be notarized.
Gotcha.
They could write a letter to us saying that the new survey is in fact right. It does reflect the position on the ground or whatever. Surveyors have their own ways of, they, they have disputes all the time.
Trying to say, getting away from the surveyors if the two parties could just.
If you don't want to involve surveyors.
Money, that sort of thing.
Well, they're gonna have to be if anything's gonna change.
Yeah.
You're not really allowed to move the monuments.
Why?
Yourselves.
Yeah.
And I'm not asking for any monuments to be moved.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not disputing the area of land.
Okay, well, we're not gonna, I think we're not gonna reopen that because I think we did.
New session.
John, may I just make a comment on that?
Yes, Andy, please go ahead. Yeah, I just gonna say, um, in, in my somewhat limited experience, there are varying degrees of um, simplicity and complexity by which this kind of a dispute could be resolved. Uh, but I think something that you should keep in mind is that um, there's some limited risk that a more informal resolution creates the risk that subsequent owners of the property will face the same set of issues. Uh, so, um, you know, at some point, uh, these properties will change hands, you know, whether it's, whether it's next year or in 50 years. And you might just be making it a problem for the next owners, uh, if you don't do something more formal. Uh, I'm not a, uh, uh, Vermont lawyer and I have limited experience with real estate, but I have seen people try to resolve these things in a very casual way through, through a letter and then um, you know, some title examiner 20 years later uh, isn't satisfied with the letter. It wants to see a survey or something. So I'm not telling you how to do this, but I just think you should be mindful that um, uh, whatever resolution you come to should be one that uh, is clear and, and um, can, can really finally resolve it for both you and, and your heirs.
Okay, so as a practical matter, um, next steps. Well, first of all, I just want to check in with the commissioners. I think we're all in agreement except for maybe Jim. Jim's not sure. But we, we're all in agreement.
They need to come up.
Yeah, we wanna. We're not gonna all.
What the physical one is.
We're not asking for kumbayas here, but you know, we can't just jump in the middle of it.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So I can share with you Deb's contact information. That's up to you. If you think that's the best way, I'm not saying you have to. Um, there may be costs involved. Um, the next steps for you, as I understand them, this week, the, the state will be getting a plan from you. Um, I don't think this would hold anything with them up. They will be able to decide on the wastewater issues. And we can revisit that next month. Does that sound fair? Okay.
Well, their response to me on the wastewater issues is I had to perform a, a test for expanded or a replacement system at the house.
Right, okay.
Because that being subdivided into a smaller parcel, which we've already done, they've already, you're submitting that documentation already.
Okay.
Because the other two parcels, there's no development being proposed. For the parcel.
Okay.
That there is gonna just be the exemption written into the deed that anyone that buys them afterwards will be responsible.
It'll be in their decision.
Yes.
Right, right. Okay, so you know, we will need to see their decision. I, they generally been turning those around pretty quickly these days.
Boom, my, my surveyor couldn't give me any ideas to help. I have to.
I, if you get it in this week, I, I think there's a good chance it might be ready next month. So if you have that next month, that would be great.
I'd like to be on the docket again.
We'll add you to the, add you to the agenda already, so. John? Andy, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, is, is this an appropriate time for us to discuss any differences between our town subdivision regs and the state requirements? Or should we do that next month?
Um, probably next month, I would say, but uh, just in terms of how long this conversation gone, but if you think it's irrelevant now, go ahead.
Well, I just, uh, yeah, the, the, um, what we've been calling deferral of permit, uh, kind of a loose catchall phrase. Um, the provisions in the state uh, are different from the towns and I just uh, would suggest that uh, the applicant look at the town's regulations carefully because uh, circumstance under which the town's regulation uh, allows the septic requirements to be basically deferred to the purchaser are much more limited than the uh, state provisions. So I just don't want him to be surprised uh, to learn that.
Well, that's a good point. Um, so it probably does make sense to mention it now despite this being quite long. Um, what Andy's referring to is um, perhaps as showing the age of our regulations, again, the state has a much more, you know, we're using a little bit of a shorthand, calling it deferral of permit. You know, you may be getting accurate information. They no longer call it that, but that's sort of generally what it is. It says you don't have to have a plan if you're not gonna build on it yet. You don't have to have a wastewater system designed. Our regulations is something different. They have um, very explicit cases in which we're allowed to approve lots that for which there is no wastewater permit. They are from memory, open space, agriculture, forestry.
And given to a relative, I think is the fourth.
And a gift. Correct, thank you. Um, and it's only in those specific cases that we are allowed to, to consider those deferrals. Um, I think we're all in agreement. That's not awesome. These regulations do need to be rewritten. Um, but that is what we have and what it is how we've been deciding these subdivisions in the past. So I think what Andy is referring to is whether or not um, we can classify one or more of these lots as being one of those cases. It seems to me, know, knowing a little bit about the land, not all of what's there, but it seems like lot three, well, we used to call lot three, four on your survey is entirely open. There is no development on it whatsoever. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's also 50 acre lot. So where do you want to put the center?
No, that's a different.
That's a.
Not, not the muddy waters, but basically all you need is a, oh, a a theoretical.
Yeah.
One spot and a theoretical backup. And the state just wants to know there's actually two physical spots for wastewater. Now, the guy, person that buys it can throw that out the window and apply for a new wherever they want.
Do you have any additional expense that puts into a supposed location for a development? For a person coming in? I mean, me as, as the person who wants to sell the property, I'm not gonna try to dictate to somebody where they want to build or what they want to do because that's gonna be entirely up to them.
Oh, well, I put.
That they're gonna charge me $5,000 to do the test some to, to acquire. And then it's not gonna be in a location that's even probable for what they want to do. I think that's a little bit on the outward edges of, I can understand if you're talking with a one or two acre parcel of land, pretty much anywhere within that one or two acre boundary, you could still have a septic system and make it work.
Yeah, it's not, it's not quite an accurate way of describing it, in my opinion. So I mean, your lot is large, this lot three. And that said, there are still only probably a few places that are really great building lots on it. We agree with that?
Now, I think, I think. There would be several.
I think there are several. I think in fact, probably a new owner would further subdivide to be frank.
And that would be the benefit of the towns.
Sure. In fact, you were free to do that yourself.
Well, I'm at my age. I don't care.
I, I believe you.
You know, my family has done a pretty good job because my dad and mom took the parcel of Lehman. A single taxpayer was bearing a burden of all of that. They turned it into now where there's six individual homeowners sharing.
What I'm suggesting is there, even when you say this is a large lot, there are still building lots on it. Like a developer could look at and say, I could see a house there. I could see a house there and that. And so what sometimes happens.
But that can't be my responsibility.
No, it's not a responsibility, but it's an opportunity for some people. So some people will say, this happens regularly. I'll take one of those and I'll permit it, right? And then you sell it as a build ready site, okay? The person could still divide that off and have two other lots to build on, whatever, how many, 10 lots. That's one way it sometimes happens. Um, in our regulations, we don't really have the ability right now to do something like the state is doing. Now, I think, um, Andy, do you see, firstly, does that um, accurately represent your point?
Yeah, that, that was my point. And we had this uh, in a case last year or the year before, maybe longer ago than that. I can't remember now, but we had this exact problem and I'm sympathetic to Mr. Garrow's position that uh, and uh, when we get to revising and updating these regulations, that this is something that I think we should change. But uh, until that happens, that is uh, the state of the town's regulation. And I'll, and while, I'll just add that while it may seem like a needless additional expense um, to, to have us, an engineer identify a spot where a septic system could go. It actually uh, has the effect of increasing the uh, sales price of the property because then you can sell as a lot that's already uh, been determined to have a, a, a site where you could put a septic system. So a lot of buyers don't want to buy a lot until that, that's determined or they won't pay as much until, if it hasn't been determined. So you'd probably recoup that additional expense in any event. Uh, not that I.
I was just gonna ask if you saw any reason, um, without the commission having an opinion on it, um, whether lot three would crawl by its open space?
Well, the problem with their regulation is that it says that subdivision has to be um, solely for open space or agricultural or forest or agriculture, whatever. Um, and um, yeah, I, I don't really see how the, the fact that its current condition is undeveloped really changes that. Um, because it's obviously gonna be sold for development.
Okay, let, let me ask one other question. The, let's call it the parole permit. Is that only for lot three? No. Or is it for lot two? It would be for the lot two as well. Because there's no, there's, the state's.
Well, lot two has a structure.
It has a structure, but there's no other development. There's no, there's nothing there. That's a shock. That's a, it's an old barn.
Right. I don't think we can go much further on that tonight, Andy.
I, I agree. I, I mean, my purpose in raising it was just to make sure that Mr. Garrow was aware that our regulation is different from the states and you should be mindful of that.
Yeah.
I guess I'm having a little trouble dissect or digesting the fact that the town can upend the state requirements.
No.
Or say that the state, the town can impose super requirements on the state.
That we can do. Yeah, it depends on the regulations. So in some cases, they're much, much, much looser. In some cases, they're uh, different. Um, so I will just point out where this is probably referring to here. Do you have the reference, the section, Andy?
Yeah, I do. It's, yes, I do. It's um, um, section two, that is Roman two, um, subsection B1, B as in boy. Where it says if a minor subdivision is for the sole purpose of forestry, agriculture, open space or gift, then a survey of new boundaries is all that is required. And then it goes on from there.
Pain in the neck for some time, but it's there unfortunately. Um, I think we're just gonna have to leave that hanging a little bit tonight and mull it over, but I would review that section with your surveyor too, and, and the state's not gonna care what this says at all. So if you are state permitting, um, and go forward, um, there will be something we'll have to address, I think, I think next month. We'll have to discuss it some more.
I think we haven't addressed their issue about water.
We, you know, I. We do, for next month, after you guys have these discussions. Um, you know, and the reason why I'm putting all this before the discussion of reds and water is for multiple reasons. One is there may be discussions of potential home sites involved and access needed to them. In any case, act, we will have to define where the access will be to lot three. That's part of the requirements. Um, but also the position of the well with respect to the boundary lines will matter. And um, understanding the impact of any development on the needed water rights, something that I think we'll have to also put.
But again, I mean, I'm, I'm viewing that as a potential, the person who comes along to buy it may want to fire it and do nothing.
Sure.
So the potential for me to try to assume what somebody who's gonna come along and want to do is kind of I don't know what the right word is, um, on me. On me, to try to figure out what somebody was, might or might not want to do.
I can see how that would be the case.
Now.
Yep, I can see how you have that opinion. But so I think what we're going to do is we're going to, I think we're going to limit debate here on this tonight and. We're on the agenda for next month, we'll have information for the state wastewater. Probably even a permit and we might have had a discussion between neighbors about the boundary lines. Is there anything else that we think we need to discuss tonight with respect to? Any content, contented issues or subdivision itself? I understand your frustration, it's, it is a difficult process and it's very confusing, especially with a really. Unfortunate regulation.
I mean, I thought I was, I was doing myself a favor by coming to get into the package to be able to. Know what to acquire and get together and what I needed to accomplish and that package does none of that. That came from the town, one that I picked up that was in here, so it's a regulation. It is not very.
Yeah, you're definitely making note of that. Yep, I, I feel.
I can see we're in different scenarios that might apply, but in my particular scenario. You know, with you just trying to diverge myself of that land to be able to, you know, to move and get out of here. Is what my ultimate goal is.
Yeah, I mean, on that note, I mean, was, did you have an intention of containing any of these parcels?
No.
Okay, so these are all to be sold.
Eventually.
Eventually, okay.
You know, that works out for me because by being able to sell, by keeping my shop. Anything that's left over at the house, I can move down there and I could do one fine auction. And be able to clear out and then, you know.
Right. The shop, you know, the lot, the lot on.
On turnpike.
Three, yeah, one on the turnpike. Okay. I will send you Deb's information, is there anything else you want from us for this?
No.
And we'll revisit the issue of the well.
Yeah.
Once we have.
Right, it's the only issue we have, I hope so.
I appreciate your patience. Anywhere else, we are, we just have to take this one step at a time. Anything else from the commissioners?
Tell them that we're going to start reviewing. You know, give my heads up if you're going to start reviewing.
Well, okay, well, let's get through the Belmont stuff first, please, but yeah. What's that? Oh, did I pocket one of yours? I'll do that.
That's fine.
You gotta watch me.
That's fine.
Maps all look like ours. I'll be in touch about Deb and we'll see you next month. And just communicate, well, Faith is out of town, unfortunately, that's not helping us either. But you have a planning commission email. I'll be checking that while Faith's not around, so if you have any questions, so.
All right, I will, I will be interrupting my engineer and. You know.
He feels free, by the way, he is free, I think you actually, did you sign on your application that you have an agent? You did not, if you want to make that person your authorized agent, they can contact us too.
Okay, well, I don't know if they want to accept that responsibility.
Exactly.
I know I've got.
Whether or not there's a cost.
I know they've got, they're charging me plenty now, that's why all of these additional expenses are, you know, are. Kind of straining the budget, you know.
I totally hear.
You know, I'm selling the land for a reason, it's not because I have a ton of money now.
No, I know, it's all taken off your.
Not have to be like Jim and go to work every day.
Can't do that, so I got that red thing in there.
Yeah, all right, okay, well, let us know. If anyone wants him to contact us, we'll work it, you know, put that on the thing, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so unfortunately, we still have one more, two more things to do then, I believe. Where do they put it, you got it? I don't think so.
Okay, we're in doubt, no new business.
Town plan, okay, so it went to the state, that's good, we're all set there. The report, Andy sent around, you sent it around, right?
I did.
Okay, did anyone have a chance to see it?
Yeah, his was only in two or three pages, it wasn't full, oh, okay.
I think that's it.
What we made for us. Okay, that was fine then.
Yeah, it's just basically what happened.
All right.
Anybody have an issue with that, it looks pretty straightforward?
No.
Everybody's good?
Right.
Okay, by unanimous consent, we'll approve the draft, Andy's draft of the report, updated report, right? The town plan has now been submitted to the regional planning commission, it will likely be on the docket for April sixteenth. I don't know if I'll be able to get to that meeting, you're all welcome to go, I think it's just going to sail through. Our regional rep, I think, will be there, Jesse, hopefully. But I'll let you know when I hear back from them. I think that's it, that will be really, I think that'll be the done, finally done. I think I was it on town plan, right, Andy?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, Belmont Village designation. Faith was able to get Caitlin to, or the select board to revise the minutes. To reflect they approved applying, that was important. In addition to that, we need to quote from the town plan. That's easy enough, I didn't send you any proposals on that, I think every time we see it in the town plan, I'll just copy and paste it out. I put together a cover letter draft. And have you all seen that, this came out this afternoon, so we may not have. I should have given it to you earlier, so. This is basically copied, did you see it? You got it, okay, perfect. This was copied, I copied this almost entirely from the twenty sixteen renewal. And added just a few bits, Stephen, what I was hoping you could tell me. Is if the museum bits of there are correct or they're not, I thought they might not be, so tell me what's wrong.
Minor's this one, trust me, you want to write on this one?
Yeah, he can, he can write on this, oh, did you already do it? Okay, perfect, all right.
Well, minor, highest post office in Vermont.
Okay. Well, since Vermont's highest.
Okay, I missed that part.
I'm not sure it's true anymore.
This might be, I'm just not sure about this part, but you know, at the. The hayfields and surrounding the village.
Okay. Yep.
Just semantics. You know, active birds.
Oh, all right.
Minor.
What was the, oh, okay.
Oh, so, I thought that.
Seasonal celebrations, it's better to say Cyber Days.
Well, I agree, or, for example, Cyber Days.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Or something like that.
Yeah.
On the museum part, I just put a, what a goat.
I don't know, is there was something about the museum that's.
Right, and where I had a question about, right next to it. Hold on, help me find it, it says Perkins House is year round, it's only open during the, same as the blacksmith shop. That's really the only thing.
Okay.
Oh, you showed it on there? Okay, I know, I just put the question mark next to it.
Well, write it, write what you want it to say, I'm near the museum.
It's minor.
Yeah, just.
I mean, I'm not looking at anything major here.
Yeah. What I don't know is whether they want letters of support with this. I don't think it would hurt. Stephen, do you think the museum would write a letter of support for the designation renewal? I'd like to get one from the library maybe, or the community association too. It's like.
I have connections with them.
I thought you might. Could you arrange that?
I could write it, I'm the one who's going to practice.
I think it would be helpful. Kind of glossed over the store a little bit, you know, you can see Derek mentions it, but.
What store?
Well, I don't know what's happening with the store.
I mean, what he's done.
Looks doesn't sell groceries.
Not yet. I don't know what he's.
I don't think it's going to be grocery store.
I think they should just go for pot. They all, they may already.
At one point, there was something about Malhoney Beer moving in there.
Funny, it used to be a summer get away, now it's a winter get away.
Yep, tables return.
I crossed off something I shouldn't have, so I haven't lighted it in, so I actually crossed that out, sorry. I just basically put, got it together, I just said Perkins House and. Blacksmith Shop, but, yeah. Perkins House on the Green and the Blacksmith Shop serve as the seasonal thing.
That's still the correct title of the organization, right?
Uh, Malhoney Community Historical Museum. What's your minor stuff to me?
Good, okay, I'll be back, but any changes?
I didn't see any, but I'm not super versed with the. Yeah, I mean, I'm first with the history and stuff, but.
I got you, yeah.
The opening hours and stuff of all that stuff. And I got beat up a long time ago by using passive verbs, that's why you see.
Yeah, that's good, so the other things that'd be included, so a little note here about the maps, you saw that? It is in fact part of their requirements now for new designations that parcel boundaries should be followed, which makes perfect sense, you know.
If they give you.
Just made a little note here, at some point, we'll get to it, not. Hopefully they won't. This is a little bit tricky, the regional planning commission confirmation of planning process. That's normally issued when the regional planning commissioner reviews the town plan. Which is equal sixteen.
Four one like that?
So I'm going to. I'm going to see if we can get that, I've got a email to see if we can get that. And that's it. So you'll be able to write a letter of support, hopefully. I'm going to try to contact the community association, I think that's probably all we need. Just a couple, maybe the library. Although they're.
Alberds.
Yeah. So, no, I think that's it, I think that's hopefully all we need for the application.
Unless you want to throw the bad instruction, yeah. I think a couple would be.
I think.
I mean, I honestly think you'd probably do it without any.
Probably could, because it's renewed.
Yeah, but two would probably do it.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to just take Stephen's changes here and suggestions and. That's all we have. I neglected to mention, we have a wastewater permit. For Pat Haslam. That name does not ring a bell to me, where is it? Nope. Seven sixty Maple Hill Road. Seven sixty, that's close to you, isn't it?
That's down, down on one ninety eight, so it's past.
It's down on the end.
Towards the end, towards the end.
What's Russ at? That's he's down that way.
It's back, it's back up this side. Nearby sews.
So half way down.
It's not the octagon, that's like eight hundred and something.
No, it's, it's right, even number or odd number?
Even.
Even sixty.
Even, it's, it may well be the one next door to Sue.
Presby.
Presby system, they're, they're no big deal. There's something about a hell of property too.
Yeah, I thought we saw one of those combined. And they, then another.
Where, which property is? But Steve sold his house, I'm told.
He did?
That's what I'm told, and he's ranking down across from. Jason Marshall. No, it's not about septic fail.
Oh, three?
Yeah.
Is it an old place?
Don't know.
Across from, oh, you mean Station, Station Road or like?
That little house, there's two little houses right just below Jim Chester's wood shop.
Oh.
No, they're on, they're on one oh three.
Oh, they are on one oh three, okay, the one with the sunflowers.
Right.
The one with the sunflowers out front all the time.
Between right construction.
Well, good for him for finding a place to rent.
Well, more or less, yeah.
Okay, I think we're done, are we, anything else?
He would not give up.
We're recorded.
No, okay.
Recorded.
So the worst, worst of that was.
Well, that's a juror person.
Well, we can't talk about it when we're a juror.
Are we all done tonight?
We're done, are we done, Andy? You're muted.
Are you good?
You're muted.
I don't have anything else for us to discuss.
I don't either, let's discuss. Dinner, bed.
Oh, God, bed.
All right, meeting adjourned.
I don't get to see that.